All right, seeing that it's approximately 7:05, I'll open up the meeting of the zoning board of appeals for March 8th, 2021. Present for our meeting are members of the board, Isaiah and Isra, Jerry Joy, Bob Durgan, Pete Poselin, and Dan Bosari, and myself, Bert Gainer. Also, hosting the meeting is Charlie Sealy, and this is Alana Snow, she's on there too.
It's so fresh.
Okay.
That was a nice comment.
There's an underlying joke there, Charlie. I'll tell you later.
All right, Alana, I couldn't resist that. Well, yeah, I could, but I didn't. All right, uh, let's do the first appointment. Alana, what do we have at 7:05? Petition number 927. We got some correspondence from Matt from Outback Engineering regarding Zero Walnut Street, the special permit for the horse barn. What do we have, Alana?
Yes, they requested an extension, so you'll just need to accept that request.
Did they specify a date and time or just our next meeting?
Next meeting.
Our next meeting. All right, well, then I'll accept a motion from any of the members of the boards to accept the request regarding petition number 927, Outback Engineering on the special permit for the house barn, to accept the request for an extension. Somebody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion for petition 927 to accept the extension and continually petition until our next meeting.
Which is April, what is it, Alana? The 12th?
Sorry, April 12th.
April 12th. Okay, do I have a second? I'm sorry. Okay, I have a motion in a second to accept the request for the extension until our April meeting. Seeing that we're doing the Zoom meeting here, I'm going to ask for a roll call vote. Isaiah?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
And myself, yes, it passes unanimous. We'll reschedule that for the April hearing. Okay, what else did I have here? All right, uh, let's move on then. What do we have? How about minutes for the February 8th, 2021 approval and signatures? Anybody members had a chance to review that? Any changes, deletions, or corrections? I take it we have none. All right, then I'll accept a motion then to accept the minutes as presented.
I'll make a motion.
Motion to accept it.
Isaiah made the motion. Do I have a second, please?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. I will go by voice vote. Isaiah, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Uh, Jerry?
Yes, aye.
Bob?
Yes.
Uh, Pete?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Okay, passes. All right, Alana, what do we got for a bill? We've got a bill from Armory Engineers invoice number 15545A from 211. What's that for?
Um, Country Club Estates.
Yes, I have $1,406.
Yes.
What, do you have the actual, what is that for? I don't have a copy.
I believe, oh, did I not send you the invoice? Hold on a second. It just says professional services, January 1st through January 31st, engineering services for Country Club Estates.
Okay.
Nine and a half hours.
All right, we had one before regarding the intersection or whatnot, so this was a different one?
Yes, this is dated February 11th.
Oh, okay. All right, uh, motion from the board to pay the invoice for Armory Engineering. I'll take a motion, pay the $1,406.
I'll make a motion to approve the invoice from Armory Engineering.
Okay, and do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to accept the invoice and pay that from Armory Engineering regarding the Country Club Estates. A voice vote again, all those in favor say aye. Isaiah?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
And Dan, any objections?
Not at all.
No, and yes, myself, passes unanimous. Okay, correspondence from the Board of Selectmen, a public hearing notice, 3921. Alana, what's that one about?
Um, did you get it? I think I attached it to your emails. Let me grab it. Hold on one second.
Got that one.
Um, sorry, it's, um, the Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, March 9th, at 6:45 PM in the Great Hall to consider an application by Michael Geddes and Sarah Cohen for a long-term trailer permit for residential use on property located at 95 Anawan Drive.
Okay. All right, thank you. And, uh, all right, Alana, what we have? We have an application from Neil St. Croix as far as from a talent thing form?
Yes.
We'll have to take a look at that. And, oh yeah, there's also a notation here, other business, so the conflict of interest. Everybody has to do that, go online and take that thing up. I've got mine in, I don't know if anybody... Alana, are we missing anyone, anybody else from the board that needs to have that done?
If you can see Peter Percellin, might give it away.
Guilty.
Pete?
Yeah.
Pretty much half of you with this one.
And I think Isaiah as well.
Ah!
Not just me, okay.
I did my, I just did mine last week. It's a pain in the neck. You gotta do what you got. Uh, okay, 7:00 PM, 5:19. Oh, we got the letter, Alana, from the Country Club Estates, petition number 920 for the continuance. We got that request in writing. Did I see that? I think I remember that.
Um, I believe we did. I'll have to go back, I'm sorry.
Okay, just so we know. All right. Oh yeah, there it is right there, next meeting, April 12th. Sorry, Alana, you already had that on here. My bad.
No, thank you.
All right, well, uh, seeing that our next hearing for petition 931, Robert D'Agostino with 596-1 Ponset Street isn't scheduled till 7:30, and unfortunately, we cannot open that hearing until 7:30. So unless anybody has any other business or discussion, or any new business or anything, we have 15 minutes to kill.
So what you can do, Bert, is in fact declare a recess for that time. People might want, you know, keep the meeting up. So people, if they want to look at each other, they can do that, or they can close off their camera and get something to eat or whatever else they need to get done during the next 15 minutes. And then at the appropriate time, what, 7:30?
7:30, that's the scheduled meeting, yes.
Then at 7:30, you go back into session. So what you want to do is recess, not adjourn.
Oh, did I say adjourned? I meant...
No, 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 you didn't say either. But you could do that legally so that people don't have to just sit here for 15 minutes and look at each other.
All right, we can do that.
They can go off and do whatever they want for 15 minutes and just be back in front camera or no camera at 7:30.
All right, gentlemen, why don't we do that? We'll take a recess for 15 minutes and then open up the next hearing at the scheduled time of 7:30. All right? Cool.
Need a vote, need a vote.
I don't like ever remember this ever happening before. We actually had a, usually...
I'm with you.
All right, see you in 15 minutes.
Bert, 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 you need to vote.
Oh, we need to vote to do the recess?
Yes.
Okay, can I have a motion to do a recess?
I'll make a motion to recess until 7:30.
Okay, I have a motion in a second to recess till 7:30. All those in favor, please say aye by voice vote. Isaiah?
Aye.
Jerry?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Pete?
Aye.
Myself, yes. Dan, you good?
I'm good.
All right, awesome. Passes unanimous. See you guys at 7:30. All right, well, seeing that it's 7:30, we'll call the hearing back into session. And we will move on to petition number, stand by. Uh, reopen petition number 931 regarding 596-1 Ponset Street, special permits and variance. Mr. Dagseel, there he is right there. How are you doing?
Very good. You asked for no snow Saturday, and look what you got.
Oh, you got, took snow with you.
You didn't ask for, to be nice though, you just said no snow.
We have to read the fine print.
I know.
All right, uh, let's reopen this. Let's see where we are. We had the close of our last meeting. We had several questions that pertain to the, to the, well, the board members had. I'm hoping that the site inspection did clear up some of them anyway. Let's see. Charlie, you got a chance to review that also, didn't you?
Which?
The petition regarding Mon Ponset Street. Did you see that one?
I've seen the plans and such, yes. And so if at some point you need them brought up on the screen, I can do it.
All right, uh, Amy, do you have all that? Are you ready to go with that?
I don't think Amy Questle's here.
Oh, no, I'm sorry, Alana. My bad.
Yes?
This, Alana, do you have the, have the documents there or the maps and the plans that were submitted? If we need to, we can throw them up on the screen?
Yeah, I think Charlie will be doing that if you need that done.
Okay, Charlie just said you were gonna do it.
I never said that.
Charlie would never do that. He would never do that.
Okay, well, let's open it up. Let's see. First of all, one of the questions that we had, you know, pulled this out to the board members. First of all, is a single-family home residence allowed in the business district? I think bottom line, we've all pretty much concluded that, yes, it's acceptable in a business slash residential, so I think we're all, we're all good with that. The foundation, why don't we start off with that one first? Some of the, with Rob Pichorelli, is Rob in here with us?
Yeah, I'm here, Bert.
Okay, thank you. All right, as far as, as far as the foundation, I guess approximately, if I recall correctly, correct me if I'm wrong too, it was approximately 10 or 11 years ago when half of the theater was torn down. And on the inspection, I think we could all pretty much see that the foundation is still, is still present. Now...
Bert, I can't tell you the exact date when it was torn down. I'd have to go back into permits to see when a demolition permit was pulled.
I can.
Okay.
All right, why don't we?
I can tell you. Yeah. It was in 2011, and it was, I have the permit in front of me. It was, um, December 7th, 2011.
Okay, and I think it was also discussed at the, that if we were, there was still water going to the portion of the building that still, still remains.
Yeah, the water main is still there. Electricity, we have electricity on the, on the property, yeah.
Okay, so the question that arose was on a, on a special permit for an alteration of a non-conforming structure. The foundation itself to be considered, first of all, if it's considered a structure, and I think by definition, it does meet the definition of a, of a structure, even if it's just the foundation. Now, an alteration. Why don't we get on to that? Rob, 167-8B, the alteration by definition. What, it cannot be altered if the cost exceeds 50% of the real market value?
Well, I believe that's how it reads, yes, Bert.
In, did you? Okay.
Here's the problem with our bylaws as far as an alteration, Bert.
All right.
Look at the definition of alteration, it's any construction. So reconstruction or other action resulting in a change of the structural parts, or height, number of stories, exit size, use or location of a building or other structure. So my opinion is tearing the house down would also fall under an alteration.
Mr. D'Agostino, then, did you care to address that? If certainly going to have to exceed 50% of the market value of the, of the foundation that's in that portion of the building that's still there.
And Mr. Chairman, I believe that was on the denial letter that I wrote to him, that he would need a special permit for that.
All right, Mr. Dagseel, no?
Like I say, we have to tear it down so there's not going to be a structure existing any longer. And we're putting, we're building a new foundation and a house in that footprint, within the footprint. That would be probably what my special permit would have to consist of.
But what about that?
There's nothing, originally...
The market value, the alteration.
Well, I mean, the value of this building right now has no real value. Is that fair to say?
I think that's fair to say, yes.
Okay, the, and the original building was, the whole building was like 92 feet long. So I mean, I, I...
So a special permit...
The bylaws, the bylaws just doesn't work here. But you know what I mean? It's, it's, it doesn't make much sense to take up, take that, that building. It just is, it needs to be built with a house on it. And of course, it's going to exceed more than the value of that.
So the question is, is, it, Rob, has the special permit has been denied? Or was it, I don't understand, where do we?
No, no, he's coming before, my opinion, Bert, is he's coming before you for a special permit for the alteration.
Okay. All right, so then, well, gentlemen, other members of the board, let me open it up. What other questions do you have after the site inspection that you, you need addressed from Mr. D'Agostino or statements that you'd like to make regarding the property or questions you may have regarding this? I'll open it up, Jerry or Pete or Bob, Dan?
I have a question for Rob. So in alteration, if the building was raised and a new building property in a different location, would that be considered an alteration? That would just be, as any other property, just a new build?
Again, I'm not disagreeing. I'm just basically literally reading the definition of an alteration. The problem is, we've got 167-8, we've got non-conforming uses, continuation, alteration, extension. We've got a definition of alteration, but we don't have a definition of continuation or extension within our bylaw. The definition of alteration, as I said, is any construction or reconstruction or other action resulting in a change of the structural parts or height, number of stories, exit size, use or location, or location of a building or other structure. So I think it's up to the board to decide whether this fits into that category or not, because it seems to be lumping everything together.
Bob?
Um, I mean, location, I don't think you're, you're moving the existing building. You're building a new building. That wouldn't really fit in alteration. I would think if he's building on or raising and putting in the same spot might fit as an alteration.
Okay.
We haven't talked too much about placing a house in a different position on this lot either. So I think that's a possibility.
It, could I say something?
Yeah.
It just doesn't, I wish I could have gone to zoning board before I went through this whole process, but I couldn't. I asked to do that. But anybody that very, has always told me, inside that foundation, focus on that. That's what I told the engineer to do. If we start trying to move this now, it changes the whole plan, and it just doesn't make sense. The best thing for this property is a 46 by 28 house that's in that footprint with the plan that I submitted. And it just works well for that property. And it solves this for the future. And if it is a special permit, like I say, some of the bylaws, we all know that some of them make sense and some, they just don't apply in this particular case. I think this is why this has been a problem. But this doesn't affect the town. The building's been in that, that spot since 1938. And it was, it was perpendicular with the street for that long of a time. And that building used to be 92 feet long. And the foundation is, the foundation is the foundation. The building would be temporary. The wood pile would be a temporary building anyways, but the foundation never went anywhere. Even if the place burnt, the foundation is still there. I just think this works the best. I think the engineer would agree with me. It was, it was just, it was good for everybody. The neighbors love it, love it there. It's, I've talked to every one, and of course, if they had said, boy, I don't want that house ever put in that place, I would have probably thought about it different. But every time you talk about changing and putting the house somewhere else, it just doesn't make any sense. Not for me. It doesn't make sense for me. It might for the person who wants to move the house, but it doesn't for me. And like I say, nobody's complaining about where the house is going to go. And you can't use the 50% or percentage of the building that's existing now. The building's junk. I just think it would be the best...
Yeah, but Mr. D'Agostino, that's our bylaw. I mean, that's not...
I know it isn't.
That's by law.
I guess that's why, I guess that's why I had to go for a special permit. And like I say, every situation isn't the same.
Right.
Mr. Chairman?
Uh...
It's Rob, the building inspector?
Oh, yes, Rob, sorry. You're on a different page. Yep, go ahead.
So I think if your board makes a determination that the foundation that is there is an existing structure, I believe the applicant is proposing to stay within the footprint of the existing structure. Based on the plan in front of me, he's making the front setback more conforming, going from 2.1 feet to 23.3 feet. The rear appears to be coming more conforming. And I guess you would say the, the line, the lot line that's dotted appears to be coming just a tad bit more conforming also. So I think the board needs to determine whether it requires any variances if he's not exceeding the setbacks he has currently. He's not becoming any more non-conforming. Whether or not he just needs a special permit for the 50% alteration.
Right, so then, Rob, a new structure on an, on an undersized lot. He's going to, first of all, he'd need a variance for the lot size itself. It's sitting on 17,000 square feet.
So... Which, which lot are you looking at?
The one that the house is going on.
No, I believe the house presented is going on the existing lot of 10,416.
Okay, I confused it, 10,416.
Yeah, so it's, it's proposed to go into the existing footprint.
Okay. But if it's still a non-conforming structure, is he still going to need variances for all of the...
I believe that the problem here is we need to decide what's going on with the merger of the two properties. My contention and my opinion is if, if the property is being merged, that lot line disappears, and you have, you have somebody proposing to rebuild a house in the same or lesser footprint of something that's already there.
Well, I think we've also, with cases we've discussed previously in the past too, Rob, and correct me if I'm wrong. If, if, bottom line, the septic system is going to be on a separate lot, which is what this is right now, correct?
At this moment, it is shown as two separate lots, it's in two separate ownerships. I don't, I don't know if the applicant has a purchase and sale that shows he's intending to purchase that lot and combine the two lots. That's, that's up to him to show that that's going to happen.
Exactly, but right now where they have two separate lots with two separate owners, that would require a variance from Title 5.
Uh, correct, if from the, from the Board of Health, if it's going on a separate lot.
Yes, all right, if you merge the two lots, if you, if he's going to merge the two lots at some point in the future, we, we as a board can only vote on and consider what's before us. We, we can't, we can't vote on something that hasn't happened yet or that should happen in the future. We can only go by and vote on and determine on the, on the, on what's in front of us. So being able to say down the road, I'd like to merge it and create that, add it to that separate lot, we, we can't, we can't do that.
Based on, based on the fact that you don't currently have something in front of you, Bert, showing the intent to purchase, that's, that's on the owner. Maybe he can answer that question.
I can.
But we cannot, bottom line, just as a board, bottom line, we, we cannot grant a variance conditioned on the future actions.
I think if, Bert, I think if he has a signed purchase and sales showing the intent to merge the lots, you, you should check with town council, but that might suffice.
Just the purchase and sale?
But the purchase and, the purchase and sales would have to be in the same entity as the application shows and the purchase and sales is written. So you would want to check with council to make sure that the purchase and sales is enough to do that.
Hey, Bert?
Yes, sir, Mr. D'Agostino.
I had sent the purchase and sales agreement to Charlie this afternoon.
Right, I feel bad.
Excuse me, Charlie, what'd you say?
He did send the purchase and sales agreement to me. I've emailed all of you. You all should have it within your emails.
And on the plan, Bert, everything was designed for the two lots to be combined. It even says on the plan to be combined. And that would be, and that, and that, the whole design was designed for the two lots. And we were always trying to increase like the, like the non-conforming to make it more, more conforming. So we're adding 17,000 square feet to that property.
That's correct, but Mr. D'Agostino, at our last meeting, again, correct me if I'm wrong, you, you were told us that if you didn't get the variances, you weren't going to purchase that, that lot next door, the vacant lot. That's what you said. That's what you said to the board.
Wait a minute, whoa, 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 no.
But that was before we got a copy of a purchase and sale. I don't know if that's...
No, you've always, no, we've always had, we've always had the purchase and sales. No, it was subject, it was all, you know, anybody in the world would, especially with a, any piece of property, no matter what the cost would be. If it needed to be approved, you wouldn't buy it prior to be approved. It was a million dollar piece of property, you wouldn't, you wouldn't buy anything.
I just kept saying that we cannot act and grant a variance on a future action. We can act on what's.
Brett, I think you might want to check with council about that. I think Rob's point is well taken that whether a purchase and sales agreement or that he's going to, as presented to you is sufficient for you to act as if the project is for the two lots rather than the one lot. And I would recommend that you check with council about that.
Mr. Chairman?
Uh, yes, sir.
On face value, Mr. Chairman, I, I agree with you that, you know, if it's in front of you and you have no proof that these lots are going to be merged, I would, I would agree with you. I, I, I think that town council should be spoken to just, just on that basis of whether a, a signed purchase and sales with the intent of merger is enough for you, for you and your board to, to grant the special permits needed.
Yes, because along with that, and gentlemen, correct me if I'm wrong too, it was discussed at our last meeting that, uh, and again, I, I thought in, in my research, at least my thought, was that once we grant a variance, we can't take it back. You know, it's.
Right. And that, Mr. Chairman, and I think that's a confusion. Are you, are you granting a variance or you're granting a special permit?
We, in this case, we're doing both. All would be a both.
Correct. And I, and I agree with you. If you are going to grant the variance, I would second guess that, but you would also need to ask if, if the new proposed single family dwelling is being built within the footprint and they're not exceeding the existing dimensional setbacks, meaning they're making it smaller within the footprint, I don't believe they would need the variances if they're getting rid of the lot lots. So it becomes, it becomes. Correct. If you get rid of the lot line.
Right.
And Brett, just one other thing I'd like to say. Can you hear me?
Mr. D'Agostino, yes, go ahead.
Yes. I, I, I don't, I don't think I explained myself. If, if it did not get approved for a house lot, you know, for that house, the price would be changed. I still want that property. And that was one of our agreements with the property owner. The property owner, when she decided only a couple of years ago to sell it, that was the, that was the agreement. So one way or the other, I'm going to buy it. I fixed it all up. I cleaned up the property. I got all the debris out of there. I'm not going to go backwards on this. If you, if, you know, if there's a way that you can do it and it makes sense for you, the town, me, the neighbors, let's do it. Because this is, well, I'll do whatever. But like I said, I got the purchase and sales agreement. We, Joe Webby put it so it's all going to be one piece of property. We're doing nothing but improving it. How do you do it?
Well, gentlemen, as far as checking with Amy Questle, I mean, the town council, didn't we check with her before on, on one of our previous hearings within the last two months where a septic system was going to be placed on an easement? And it was, we, it was definitely her opinion that in fact, the septic system had to be on the property owned by the applicant in, I don't know, maybe I missed something there. Pete, you want to jump in or?
Yeah, I think, I think we're kind of merging three separate things. I think we have three problems. And I think we're kind of touching on all of them. I think the first, the first concern is, is arguably something I think we're concerned about, like those other, like just like you mentioned, we had the forty B that we're worried about it, we have the walnut street property, we're worried about it. Now this one, for some reason, they're happening all at once. But I, like, I don't think, our big concern is I don't think we want to approve a special permit or a variance if there's a Title V issue that is unsolved. So it, it definitely, so I remember the conversation in the forty B we've had that there, if, if there is some sort of easement or some sort of agreement that's on paper. So I guess, yeah, like, like Charlie said, I think it's probably, and I reread her email now as we were just talking. And she doesn't say anything about whether or not those lots have to officially merged or the intent to be merged. But I think there's a question on whether or not, I think we should clarify that. That's the first issue. But the, the second issue, which is ours, I think, to solve is like, me personally, I would love to see them just be able to build this thing, but the lot is not, the lot doesn't make this very easy. So, so to make this happen, one of two things to me seems like it needs to happen. Either it is a nonconforming use for this structure, right? Which is, which would be totally allowed and they would be able to continue using that, um, that, that use for that structure this way, except they're not allowed to if it's the change or the alteration to that structure is fifty percent or more. So like if, if they're, if we're allowing them to use this nonconforming use, it can't, it also then can't be fifty percent more, the, the cost of the, the alteration can't be fifty percent or more of the, the value of what the structure. So it, it doesn't seem to me like that's reasonable, right? So the nonconforming use, I don't know if that's going to work, which means that whatever building they're going to build on there, they'll need variances for basically a new structure, right? Because if they can't meet the nonconforming use continuation, then it's going to have to be a new structure. Now, I, it seems to me that this lot is set up for them not to be able to build a typical property or build a typical structure on that property, right? So there, there might be an argument somehow because it's close to the lake and because of the topography of the lot or whatever, that those variances are reasonable. So I, I, we're all focused on trying to find them a way to do it. I don't know if the nonconforming use is going to be the way to get there. So it might be a conversation about what variances and what they meet for the ability to, to get those variances for a new structure might be, but I don't know. I try, try to come up with a, it's going to be fifty percent more or more of the cost of the structure. Definitely it's going to be. And therefore it's, can't be built under a nonconforming use, right? So it's going to have to be a new structure. But there's an argument to, to say that structure is okay and that, you know, there's some sort of hardship that they can't build any structure on there without some sort of variance. So I think that, and to Rob's point, they're not, I, we talked about this in the last meeting, they're not really increasing the nonconformity of the lot already by going to the new structure. But, you know, there, there's an argument for all this stuff. I, but the, before we could even talk about any of that, we need to solve this septic, I think.
Right.
Well, I know that was one thing, but I think we're all kind of talking about the same three things in one argument for the three separate things, right?
Well.
Hey, Brett, could I say something?
Uh, yes, go ahead, Mr. D'Agostino.
The conservation and the, and I had a botanist, they've already, they've already given, given me honor conditions for that, for that house, whether it's approved or not, for that house to be there. We're exactly where it is. The board of health, when they approved the septic system, it was, I, if I don't, if I don't, if I can't build that house.
What, sorry?
If I, and if I don't build that house, that septic system doesn't, they just, the plan just goes out the window.
Good.
If it gets built, if, if it gets approved, however you have to do that, that line is going to disappear and that septic system will be used because it'll be all one piece of property. It's all, that's the purpose of doing the whole plan. That's what I don't understand because.
Sammy!
What was that?
That was I.
Wasn't us. But, but see, it all, it's all, that whole plan is, is approved up till, up to your point, you know, up to, and I, I know you've got an issue. This isn't the easiest one, I guess, but if it, when it's, when it's merged, it all falls into place because conservation's fine, septic system's fine, all the topographic is off, everything has been done up till, up to this point. So there's nothing other than what you have to do. That building going inside that foundation was the, I always thought was the key. The foundation didn't go anywhere. The zoning, the, the, the hardship was always that the zoning changed. Since nineteen thirty-eight, there was no hardship up till the time the zoning, you know, the zoning board adopted the nonconforming lots because it didn't conform with anything. That's pretty much.
Yeah, but it has changed, Mrs. D'Agostino, right?
I know it did.
In Land Court, that, that four thirty-six F lot six, that was cut away in nineteen sixty-eight, right?
I know, I know.
So that, so that was lost as far as that lot being grandfathered, from what I understand. It's not anywhere owned in its own entirety in the.
And as you can see, the effort of leaving the foundation up, leaving the building up and paying four thousand dollars a year to keep that thing so that it can be rebuilt on, that, that is the hardship.
Well, this, that's the, the second part was in lot number three, Plan four thirty-six E, that's when it was subdivided into lot five, from what I understand. Rob, Mr. Pitorelli, you have a better, a better idea on this? Did you do some research on this, whether or not it?
Yeah, yeah, I did, Bert. And, and to your point, I, I don't know what the, um, the deed says as far, as far as the grandfathering on lot sixty-five A. I don't know the stipulations that were put on it. But what appears to me is he's presenting something in front of you that is keeping the structure on the other lot.
On the northern.
On the northern lot. And I don't believe merging them is going to create an issue with that grandfathering. I would talk, I would talk to council on it, but as far as the septic system is concerned, I don't believe that falls into it and the structure will remain on that section over there. That's what's in front of you and being presented. So if it merges, I don't, I don't think that that affects the, the loss of grandfatherability. Because he's making, he's making the lot more conformant.
I think, the, the problem is that the, if they're grandfathered, the intent of the bylaw with the, the alteration is, is that you can continue to use that grandfathered use from nineteen thirty-eight or nineteen sixty-eight or whatever. What you cannot do is increase that use so that you're rebuilding something that is worth fifty percent or more of what it currently is valued for. And so while, if that rule wasn't there, you could rebuild anything on top of a foundation.
And I think that's where you as a board need to decide how, how that applies because if you're going to take that stance, anybody that comes in to do a complete home remodel on the interior of a rundown house, isn't going to be able to do it.
Right. Especially with the price.
So if, if you want to, if you want to look at it kind of reasonably, it would make sense that that was put in there for a special permit so that the, so the neighbors could be notified and they could attend the meetings and they could voice their opinions. It doesn't make sense that you would need a variance to, to remodel the inside of your home. That's my opinion. You take it for what it is.
Brett, can I add one more thing? One more thing and then I'm done. If you don't want me to be done. But there, on my deed for, for lots sixty-five A, there is no restrictions on that, that deed.
No, sixty-five A. Which one is, is that the northern or is that the vacant?
That's the, that's the one closest to the, that's a south side, south side with the septic tank, septic system on it. There was no.
That was subdivided at one point.
Yes, it was. Yep, yep.
Along with.
And it's, and it, yep.
I am sorry about that across my internet.
Yep. Subdivided, yep, from the, from that commercial building that's there on the, on the south side of that property. And, uh, and it's somewhat, you know, leave around and around and around, but it's, you know, it still needs five thousand square feet and so much voltage and so much, this thing does still apply to that. It still has, still has the right, the right square feet on lot sixty-five, one south of this, this theater. But that's not, we're not trying to get two houses in. We, we're not trying to do anything that, that this plan doesn't show that it wouldn't work. So that's.
All right.
But I don't have anything on my deed that says that it's restricted from anything.
Mr. Pitorelli?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
As far, do you still have any questions regarding the abandonment of the property or whether that, that two years applies or? Because from what I, from the research I did, the, the applicant isn't seeking to continue a, a pre-existing nonconforming use because it is allowed, the use itself, residence is allowed in the business district. Is that right?
Correct. The, the, a single family dwelling is allowed in a business district.
So one sixty-seven eight E, the abandonment, that, that's not applicable then, right? Correct?
If, if you determine that the foundation is a structure and that they had no intent of abandoning it, that's, that's a judgment you can make as a board. That's my opinion.
Okay. All right. Well.
Again, Mr. Chairman, you know, I would check with town council, number one on the merger, number two on whether or not a purchase and sales in the same entity is enough to, for, for the intent of merger. And then any other questions you have as a board. I've given you my opinions and that's what they are, is opinions. And you're more than welcome to take them or leave them.
Okay, gentlemen, any other question? I, I, I think that's a really our next course of action. I, I really do think that we should check with the town council for just those very reasons. Any other member of the board think, you know, as far as finding out, like as Peter said, Pete, you said, find out for sure if a purchase, a purchase and sale is an efficient document in, for, to consider putting a septic system on a, on a different lot as long as the house itself wasn't being built on, the noncon, the pre-existing house that's on there now.
Yeah, well, I think we just need to find out the purchase and sale constitutes, you know, merged lots, which I don't, I don't know what it does, but.
The intent to merge lots.
Right. Rob, can you, so we were talking about the fifty percent rule. So I, like, I'm, I'm a little hung up because I think that the, um, the use is fine, right? Because so there's no need to have a grandfathered use of the property as a residential property. But the, what we, what we need to get him to be able to build that building on that footprint is a grandfathered use of the structure, right?
Correct, correct. And if you look at.
Like you're not, yeah, go ahead.
If you look at, again, Peter, if you look at the definition of nonconforming use, and I'll be the first one to admit, this is, it's all over the place. But the definition of a nonconforming use includes a building, structure or use of the land. And then it says, um, existing at the time of enactment of this chapter or subsequent amendment, amendment thereto, which does not conform to the regulations as to use or dimensional requirements. So to your point, is the structure itself a nonconforming use? I would say yes, based on that definition.
Yeah. And so then to that point, the, what I'm, if there's a way around it, I, I want to find him a way around it. I just don't know if, if, if we can do that. So you, you're saying that, that, so I'm looking at the eight B there, which is a nonconforming structure may not be altered if the cost of the proliferation exceeds fifty percent of the real market valuation of the structure at the time of the, but it's definitely, whatever he's going to, I agree that, 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 that line prohibits people from doing exactly what he's trying to do.
And I think that that. And I think that that's where you as a board need to decide under one sixty-seven twenty-one A two, if that's an exception that you can grant a special permit for. Because if, if, if we're going to say that all nonconforming use is under continuation, alteration, extension, need variances, I think you're going to find yourself in a, in a hard situation. I think if you find, I think if you find that those require special permits, which I believe has been done in the past, or most of the time, or if not all the time, that, that gives the, it gives you, the board, the opportunity to grant certain special permits to allow the neighbors and the butters to come in and voice their opinions.
So is there something in that, that twenty-one A two, I think is what you mentioned?
Yeah, well, the problem is one sixty-seven eight has no, it has no prelog. It has, it has nothing that leads you up to what it is. The only thing that, that's, that's close is under one sixty-seven twenty-one A two, where special permits are to hear and decide an application for a special permit for an exception, as provided by sections of this chapter. And then it goes down to say for the use of the property. But again, if we're going to. But again, if we're going to determine the use is a non-conforming use and dimensional requirements fall under that, I think, in my opinion, you grant special permits for those instead of variances. If variance is not necessary for pre-existing structures that are not becoming more non-conforming.
And again, you know, the applicant will have to show that he meets the criteria for a special permit, which again, doesn't, has to show a variance, doesn't derogate from the intent of the bylaw and is certainly within the established character of the neighborhood. And I think after the inspection, you know, it was pretty obvious. I don't know, Jerry, you can jump in, or Bob, same thing. You know, that's pretty much residential, all the way going north on 58, on both sides of 58. Granted, there is the strip mall to the southern portion. But, you know, whether, again, meets the criteria for the special permit. I do feel, you know, any other suggestions or anything that, you know, we need to run by town council or anybody else would think? Peter, Jerry, Bob?
No, I think if we determine that the purchase and sales will suffice for the septic system, I think we're pretty much in agreement that if it's built within the foundation, it's fine. But the big drawback, again, is that $50,000, which really doesn't relate to anything today. And I think it's true, if we don't allow someone to build on existing foundation, nothing will get built.
Well, Jerry, too, and we discussed the same thing, Bob. You know, we brought up the fact that you can't deem a piece of property useless. Bob, is that correct? I mean, we talked about that.
Correct. I think we've discussed that with other properties also. We can't deem a property, you know, useless. No.
Especially if it meets the definite, well, if town council, I think, agrees that, you know, it meets the definition of a non-conforming. But it's just the change of use itself from even, from commercial to a residential, even though it is allowed in the, you know, in a business district or the commercial district. I don't see a big problem with that, to be honest with you. We're both residential and in business are allowed in that zoning district, you know. But, I'm sorry, Pete, go ahead.
No, I just guess, I think my question, I guess my issue is, I don't know if we could, because that line is in there, 8B, like, or two, whatever it is. Whatever it is, the alteration. I don't think we can just issue a special permit, even though we know it's going to be over 50%. I, the line prohibits a lot of people from doing exactly what he's trying to do to better that property. But I also think even if it merged the two lots, there's a case for him to be able to have those variances anyway. So like, I would love to find a way to get him there. But I don't think, because the premise of that would be, if there's anything that, I think the intent of the bylaw might have been so that specifically people don't go building things that don't conform that are basically complete overhauls of that property. Which, in this case, is that overhaul is going to be a really good thing to that property. But it's definitely not going to meet the definitions of the bylaws. And I think the intent to keep that was from people renovating entire properties and building a brand-new, you know, because this is going to be a brand-new structure on the same footprint, right? But I think the intent of the bylaw is to specifically not do that. They want to grandfather the use so you can continue using what's already there. But this is going to be a brand-new structure. So like, I want to find him a way to do this because I think it's going to make it better. But I don't know if this is a.
Well, I agree. I agree with you, Pete. I think, you know, as far as property values go and building up the area and whatnot, at this point, almost anything is better than what's sitting there.
Mr. Chairman.
To be perfectly honest with you. Dan, you were there. What did you think? Anything you want to add in here?
All right. Was that me?
Yes, either or.
No, that was me, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Rob.
I'm sorry. If you want to finish with your board, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Dan, go ahead, please.
Well, it's kind of just a point. I'm reading some of the comments. And like, one comment was, the bylaws or what they are, follow them or otherwise, there's no reason. Well, also part of the bylaws, and, you know, I just got to say that some, our board is appointed because you can't, you can't write bylaws for every situation. And we're here to make judgment calls sometimes. And that's part of the bylaw also. So I kind of feel like we're shell-shocked because what's happened over the last few years, we're almost like handcuffed. I mean, we're almost tripling the size of a lot. We're increasing the setbacks. It's been approved by the Conservation Commission. It's been approved by the Board of Health. On and on and on, it's going to increase everybody's property value. It's going to be better for the pond because it's a high-tech system. We, you know, we know the system is a first-class septic system. So on and on and on and on. And I just feel, because of what's gone on in the town, that we're shell-shocked. And it shouldn't be this difficult. And I agree with what all the board members said. And it shouldn't be this difficult. But at some point, we get to make a judgment call. That's why we're here. And I think a lot of people have to remember that. Thank you.
Well, again, being detrimental to the established character of the neighborhood, that's a judgment. You're not going to get any more judgment than that. You know, that's what the, you know, as a board, we do. You know, does it derogate from the intent of the bylaw? That's, you know, one person may think one way, something doesn't derogate at all. I do think that's exactly what Dan said. You know, those are something for the board on an individual basis. Each one of us determines and we vote accordingly.
But even the interpretation, excuse me, but even the interpretation of certain bylaws too, you know, what is the intent of that bylaw? What did we really mean to do? Like, I think Peter talked about that in depth and I think he was right on the money. But we can't go, we can't be an effective board and be shell-shocked because what's going on in the past here. We have the right and the responsibility to make judgment calls sometimes. And I just wanted to put that out there.
Cassia, you got anything you want to throw in here?
No, seeming that the two lots are going to be joined. There ain't going to be no variance. And they're going to be within the footprint of the, they're going to make that house a lot smaller. In my opinion, I think we should ask town council first, then we make a decision on it.
All right. Well, if that's the pleasure of the board, I'll accept the motion. I think the three basic criterias that we were all agreeing on, that we were hoping to get a, you know, opinion from town council would be, well, first of all, if the, I don't know, however, somebody wants to word this in the form of a motion, regarding the purchase and sale, is that enough for the intent to merge? The intent to merge enough to be able to constitute with a new septic system? There is a pre-existing, there is an existing septic system of some sort, cesspool or something that's to the north of the building in the very small, flat area. But I think, I think that definitely has to be clarified by town council unless somebody else feels different. And the second thing, I would like town council to clarify the 50% exceeds the 50% alteration. Especially with the question of anything, I agree with Pete and Jerry, for that matter. There isn't anything that's not going to go over 50%. Pretty much, especially if you're starting from scratch. I mean, if we, as a board, feel, okay, yes, that foundation is a structure and it sits there, that, I think that's the big thing. We'll formulate that in a question form to town council and start off with that.
Bert, didn't she, excuse me, Bert, didn't she address that in her letter? I don't have it up in front of me. But I thought you said the 50% didn't apply in this case. Am I wrong about that?
The 50% didn't.
Yeah.
She said that.
Because the use is changing.
Residential.
The abandonment didn't apply where we weren't changing the, weren't changing the use. It was not applicable.
I don't dare open it on my computer. One more screen and I think it's going to blow up.
Yeah, she did. She said, the applicant will need to provide this information that the new dwelling will not be more than 50% of the real market value to the zoning board to determine if a special permit pursuant to 1678B may be granted. And then she goes on to say, if it can't be, then it can be a new structure that, on a lot that is undersized, that would need variances. But like, that's, now, I guess, what you said, Bert, I think is right. I think we need to figure out if the purchase and sale agreement conveys intent to merge, enough intent to merge those lots, satisfy Title V. And if we are able to grant a special permit, if we're well aware that it's not going to meet that, if it's going to be over the threshold for valuation for the alteration. You know, I think if those, if we can do either of those two things, I think he's good. If not, I think we have to look at this as, you know, a new structure. And then what we haven't had is any conversations about, you know, the hardship of this lot, which there is a good argument for, that he could use these, he couldn't build it. And again, it comes back to what you guys said before, which is deeming the lot, like, unbuildable. Now, it's a lot that exists that he can't build on without these variances. So I mean, I think those are the answers, right?
I think, I think so.
What are we basing the value of this building on? What is there now or what the new value is?
What do you mean? Because I'm not sure what exactly.
Building that's there right now has no value to it.
Well, it does have a value. It's assessed. Mr. D'Agostino said he's been paying taxes on it. So it is assessed for a value. In fact, I think on one of the printouts, there may be a copy of the assesses card on it. So it does have a value. But, I don't know what else to try. I know that they did say that.
I have that assesses here, but I just got to take one second.
So if we're starting from scratch, that building shouldn't have a value to it. They're going to condemn that building. That building is going to be torn down, right?
And that's the issue. I think the value is low. So whatever he does, is going to be over 50%.
You can't base the value on that, on the new structure, on that, what's on there right now. Because that's going to move down. And a new building is going up.
Mr. D'Agostino, you have the.
I have the tax bill on that. The building was only assessed for $28,300. And the whole property was assessed at $230,000.
What do you mean, the whole property? What is that?
I'm sorry, the theater property by itself, yep. The building itself and the land. The land was 201 and the building was $28,000.
Oh, so, so that's a total of $230,000 roughly, right about there?
Yes, but it's, you know, if you're talking about a building, it's 28,300. If you're talking about the land as well, it's 201, yep. $230,000 total.
50% of the real market valuation of the structure.
And again, that's the assessed value. That's not the market value.
And the septic, and the septic system was designed for a three-bedroom house. I think somebody was asking that earlier. But it's assessed, you know, it was designed for a three-bedroom house.
All right. And did you say, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. D'Agostino, the Board of Health approved that septic system?
That's all approved, yes, yep.
Yeah, I mean, you presented the plans and everything to the.
It's all on, yeah, it's all approved and been signed. Mr. Webby come tonight?
Yes.
He can tell you that it's been approved. He was there.
Mr. Webby's muted.
I am unmuted now. Yes, approval from the Board of Health and the Conservation Commission has been granted.
It's been signed off and everything?
Yes.
Okay, well, good note to start. Well, before I accept a motion in regards to the, you know, further action on this, I'll open this up to any other questions or comments from other people. All questions will go through the host, Mr. Seeley. If you can, you know, direct them and then unmute them and they can direct their question to myself. And then we'll find out what kind of answers we can, we could provide for them, please.
Okay, I will look for any ready questions or any note in the chat saying I'd like to speak. Okay, so who's interested would like to say something? Gordon C. Edwards?
Hey, Bert. Yep, this coordinator is 244 Allen Street. Just wondering if we have a determination of whether or not the lot needs to meet the minimum lot size if they add land to it. Does it need to go to 40,000 square feet? And the reason why I'm asking this question is, we talked about the land. Charlie, can you correct me if I'm wrong? I think it's 4Upton Street? The 4Upton or 4?
Yeah, the one with the derelict building, you know.
So we talked about that building, saying that that would not be a buildable lot because it doesn't meet the minimum lot size. If somebody else purchased that, that you wouldn't be able to take and place a new building on that, even if you kept the structure, the foundation the same.
No, but the problem, Gordon, is that that is truly abandoned. And this, for this lot that we're talking about, the property taxes, for instance, continue to be paid. The structure, according to the applicant, it's still being used for some purpose. But as it is, the use is not going to be a continued use. It's going to be a different use. Whereas for 4Upton Street, we're talking about a use and a structure that have been truly abandoned. And.
But the street itself, Charlie, I guess the reason why I'm asking is because the use is changing here. This is going to be residential use where it would stay a residential use for that other lot.
Right, well, so you've got different, you've got an apple.
I guess what I'm asking is, can we ask through you, Chairman, to town council, if somebody has a piece of property that wants to change the use? Like, is happening here, do they need to meet the minimum zoning bylaw dimensions of 40,000 square feet and 150 feet of frontage?
Well, I guess then, the minimum, I thought the, I mean, we could double-check. But I think that's the whole purpose of the definition of being a grandfathered lot if it was owned in its entirety prior to zoning. It met the 5,000 square foot minimum. This is sitting on 10 and change, I believe.
I'm asking, Bert, because you're going to change the lot size itself. So.
How will they change it, the lot size itself?
They're increasing it. They're changing the lot itself if they're going to merge them. If he owns the two lots together, they automatically merge. Once he owns the two lots adjacent to each other, they merge. So that's why I'm asking the question.
Acceptable use, right? It's been an acceptable use all throughout residential and that commercial.
Right.
I'm not asking about the use here, Pete. I'm asking about the minimum lot size and the frontage. Because once you go to merge the lots, you create a new lot.
I think he still doesn't have it once he merges those two. I think he's still.
Yeah, so that, I guess that's why I'm asking the question. Does he need to get to the 40,000 square feet?
Yeah, if he has a new structure, he either needs to do that or he needs to find some sort of variance based on a hardship to be able to do that.
Right.
Yeah.
And then when you guys were talking about 16721, there's also a section that says a special permit issued hereunder is only an authorization for a specific use with stated conditions and does not exempt that particular parcel of land from performance with the zoning chapter or other regulations of the Town Hall effect. So I think you do have to look at variances like Pete was talking. or other regulations of the town of Halifax. So I think you do have to look at variances like Pete was talking about as well. Not just the special permit. But thank you very much for allowing me to speak.
So so Gordon, Bob Dergan, I have a question for you. Um if if I'm understanding what you're you're saying, so if he was to build the the house on the lot that's grandfathered, if he determined the structure, the foundation of the structure and all that. He's technically grandfathered, but by you saying if he merges the two lot, he's creating a new lot, no longer grandfathered. Is that what you're saying?
That's what I'm that's what I'd like Town Council to answer.
Um, that's, Bert, I think that's a good point. If he merges the two lot, he's no longer grandfathered because now it's a new lot.
The structure is grandfathered.
Yes, but the structure, but I think I don't think the structure is what's grandfathered. I think the lot is what's grandfathered.
So the use of the she in her letter, she talks about this. That's the only reason I bring it up. And she talks about how the use is an acceptable use because you can have a single family residence in a commercial business district. What she's focused on is whether or not the use of the structure has been grandfathered because um because it doesn't meet the exactly what Gordon mentioned. This building doesn't meet the the bylaws. Frontage, the side lots, the river lots, all that stuff doesn't matter. So to be able to build on that build that what he wants on that lot, he needs to be able to either get the variances of a new structure or he needs to be able to use the grandfathered use of that structure that's already there. But there but I think the thing that's stopping him is that that this this one line that requires that you can't go over fifty percent, right? I think that that's how I've seen this throughout. Maybe I'm wrong.
I'm I'm sorry, Pete, I missed the last spot. What did you say?
I I think well, to get him to be able to use that grandfathered use of the structure is I think we just the fifty percent is I think what's what's stopping that line. You know, wasn't in there. I think that he'd be good to use that structure because it's been grandfathered. The structure was grandfathered, you know?
I do think Gordon has a good point, too, that if they combine the two lots, especially where they were both both those lots are not grandfathered because they were subdivided during different periods after after zoning was initiated in nineteen sixty one, the changes were. So if uh the lots themselves were preexisting nonconforming prior to the change in zone, you know something, I I think this is definitely one a question to run by uh Town Council. Like, you know, like, I think it's a valid point. I really, I myself personally think if they do combine the lots, which are the grandfathered lot and a non-grandfathered lot, being where the septic system is, would that constitute having them conform to current zoning as far as frontages, debt bets and whatnot?
But Bert, does does the uh the fact that he's only going to put the septic system on that lot, does that have any any um difference whether he owns it just for the septic system?
Well, I I think uh Town Council on on previous uh applications in front of the board uh she said that you had to own the property in order to put the septic system on it.
Or get the variance.
I'm sorry. Charlie, you came in all broken up.
Yeah, I get they can also get the variance because I believe they've got it from the Board of Health.
That's right.
Does he have does he have a uh purchase and sale? Is he gonna buy the lot?
Yes, he does.
Okay, so that resolves that issue then, correct?
However, what what Mr. Andrews just got through saying that the fact that you combine the lots, does that now put him into a category where he has to meet current zoning? Now that you're combining a grandfathered lot where the house is going with a non-grandfathered lot, which is the vacant lot where the septic system is going?
I think if you're within the bounds of the foundation, which is what I think the attorney was talking about, I I think you're okay.
Bert?
Mr. D'Agostino?
Because this is a uh however you classify it, a nonconforming, existing nonconforming, grandfathered non where when we when we're making the variances better all around, whether you call it a new lot or adding that portion to it to make it better nonconforming. You can you can go around and around, and I guess that's why you you want to talk to the attorney. But the septic system, I know what you're talking about on the septic system, but nothing gets built until that's approved. So you don't build it, you know, we're just not going to build a septic system, whatever the, you know, it's just not going to exist. But it's all designed for that house. But all we're doing is improving a nonconforming lot. So when you throw in the into the equation that that's a that lot that 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 the septic system is on as another lot for a whole new, your your thoughts have all changed again. I know it's probably a legal thing, but it's just it doesn't matter whether I, you know, the little variances that if in fact you do give get that piece of property. What this is what you're giving to the property to make it better and it solves that whole problem.
It it does, Mr. D'Agostino. I can't I can't argue with you there. It could be an improvement, but in the same breath, too. That's why we have bylaws.
I know, but they're so they're not clear. The the problem is the problem, Bert, they're not clear. Because see, the if the bylaw was clear, I would have gone to the zoning board first. You're right? Because everyone else you can work around Board of Health, you can work around conservation, you can just work around it. And even if it's minimal stuff. But then when we get to the zoning board, if we we knew, we would have gone backwards, but we didn't. This is how this is how the system works. So I mean, just saying the bylaw needs it needs to be tweaked, of course. We know that. You know that. And that's why I'm here for a special permit to be able to to do that. But then just Mr. Andrews just in talked about the lot adding another lot. I get that, but but that's we're just trying to make it better. We I could have designed, I could have asked without that lot and put a little cesspool over in the corner, a tight tank. And the house would be, you know, about as big as a a kitchen. That's about the size because it would only be good for a one bedroom house. So it's all designed for that house, for that septic system, merging those two properties. And it's just getting blown out of proportion and 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 I don't know, you know, you're not setting the president for something else. This is just that property is just a I saw to everybody. We're just trying to solve a problem here. But I didn't try to get, that wasn't my intent ever, to try to get just that theater approved with a tight tank with a, like I say, a little place to live or whatever. So we're just trying to make it better. That's all. We're not adding it.
I understand.
Call it a lot. You can call it whatever you want.
Charlie, do we have uh any any other people that want to comment on this before we ask for motion of?
We'll see. Looking for hands and looking for comments.
Seem to be getting an awful lot of comments, you know, on the chat, but uh.
Yeah, but a number of them are from anonymous people. They're not they'd actually have to provide their names if they actually wanted to be on the record.
Are we required to have the chat open during these meetings?
It's part of the public record, the media. The board can ignore what it wants to in terms of the chat, especially from the anonymous, because if we were in a regular in-person meeting, anybody's comments would have to be minutes, but they'd have to give their name and address and things like that. So folks who are doing it anonymously really, it's very nice, but you don't, they're not on the record.
I just worry it turns into a Facebook comment situation over there.
Well, then, uh, all right.
Nobody raising their hands or asking to make to speak. So you know, you could vote to do whatever you want to go to back council and make sure with a lot of what the um their deadline for decisions are right now, whether you're going to need an extension.
Alana, let me shoot that over to you. Are we gonna need an extension?
Um, I believe so. Let me um, let me just look at the date. Hold on one second.
Yeah, I think your next meeting would be what eighth is the fifteenth is the twelfth of April, I believe.
What's the uh date of the application?
January fifth, I think.
January fifth.
So how many days do we have, Charlie, there?
Well, I'm doing off my head. A lot would bet how it should be having a has her table, but I believe it's ninety days.
It's ninety days from the close of the hearing.
But when does the is there a deadline for the close of the hearing?
Yes, for for a special permit for variance. Um, it's I think it's isn't it a hundred days?
A special permit's a hundred days and a variance is ninety days.
So I I think you're I think just safety purposes, you need you want an extension and you want it at least, you know, probably at least in mid-April because you'll need to do a decision letter and such, even if you reach the decision on April night. So somewhere in the twenties of April.
Mr. Mr. D'Agostino?
Yes.
Uh, you'd be uh so so to give us proper time to uh address this with the with Town Council, uh would like to uh if you would, you would submit in writing uh to you can check with Alana so that uh we were allowed uh an extension so uh to be able to vote on this within the correct time period. First of all, uh, I'm gonna need a um a motion from uh one of the board members to uh the request for an extension until, well, it would have to would have to be on May hearing then, right? Because if it went past April twelfth.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Um, according to Amy Questle, if it is a special permit, it's ninety days from the close of the hearing. Variance um is a hundred days from the filing of the application.
So a hundred days for filing. What did you say? Uh Alana was uh January fifth? Is that what you said?
I'm sorry?
February. So we'd still be able to uh hear this again in 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 April and and remain within the uh within the time period?
But Bert, your problem's going to be that if you make a decision, you still need a decision letter. Again, I'm recommending that at the very least, you get it extended into the twenties of April.
All right, Mr. D'Agostino, could you do that, please, then uh submit a a a letter in uh in writing to the Zoning Board of Appeals requesting an extension till uh April Charlie, April twenty fifth?
Twenty twenty fifth, sure. Yep.
I can I can send um Mr. D'Agostino a letter of agreement for extension. It's just a form that he can fill out.
Thank you. That would be great. All right, in that case, uh I'll accept a motion from um members of the board to uh to accept an extension from the applicant until uh April twenty fifth. And then I'll look for a sec. If I could get that, please.
I'll make a motion to request an extension for petition.
Nine thirty one.
Nine thirty one.
Thirty one, there it is, uh to April twenty fifth.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to uh accept an extension of uh uh the application, uh petition number nine thirty one. I'll ask for a voice vote. Please all signify by saying aye, Casia.
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
Uh, Bob?
Yes.
Pete? And Dan, how do you feel on that?
Yes.
And myself, yes, passes unanimously. Uh, yes, I'll send that right off to you, Mr. D'Agostino.
Thanks a lot. Thanks, guys.
And Mr. Chairman?
I'd like to get a uh a motion. Yes, I'm sorry.
Alana had something to say.
Just one more question. Could you just um clarify for me the exact questions you want Town Council to answer?
Oh, I was just gonna do that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, we were gonna have a I was gonna do it in the form of a motion.
Oh, okay. Sorry, go ahead.
All right. Sorry, Alana, my bad.
My bad. I was jumping ahead.
Okay, uh, I'll accept a a motion. I think the uh the four topics, Pete, you kind of went through them all. I'll kind of dump this on you if you don't mind. Yeah, I know. It was the question of whether or not the uh uh the purchase and sale would.
Yeah, purchase and sale shows intent to merge, is enough intent to merge the lots, right? Um, whether or not we can issue a special permit uh to allow for fifty percent or more uh of an alteration based on the real market value, if I said that right.
All right. In fact, the the third one was to uh if the combination of the of the of the two lots would necessitate uh compliance with the new zoning requirements as far as lot size and uh what is it though? One one sixty seven uh whatever it was, the dimensions. One sixty seven eight B, I believe it is.
Yep.
Whatever, dimensions wise, one sixty seven eleven uh the requirements, if in fact it was combined, would they have to meet the the uh the new dimensional requirements? Did I miss anything else? The special permit itself, I think Pete was uh in in reference to one sixty one twenty one A two and one sixty one twenty one, I think it was A three. Those those were the the two areas. Does that sound all right?
So that's so that's three. That's three things, right? Not four.
I think I don't think there was anything else. I think we covered it, right?
It was the three. Okay, we'll go with that. So there's a motion on the floor on the floor by Pete. Thank you, Pete.
Yeah, I'll I'll make a motion to get an answer to those questions.
And uh do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to uh uh fire off the letters of uh to the uh Town Council in regards to those uh previously mentioned items. I'm not even gonna go to them again. Okay.
We got them.
So I have a motion in a second. I'll ask for a voice vote, Casia.
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
Uh, Pete?
Yes.
Robert?
Yes.
Dan, yourself?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Okay, we'll continue this then. And uh Mr. D'Agostino will be in touch. I appreciate your cooperation for that.
Thank you very much, guys.
All right. Okay, let's uh what else do we have left there? Uh Alana, what do we have on our agenda here? We got one more. We have one more thing, a discussion, right?
Yep, a discussion uh regarding one hundred and one hundred and two Lake Street.
All right, and who who do we have in front of us here?
James, very big success relative.
James, let me ask you, uh, who are you representing?
Um, my client, Tony, um he would like to purchase both lots separately, right?
Oh, so he's not the homeowner?
He's not the owner, no. Wait, um, so this is just kind of an opinion, yeah, before we spend money, you know? But what what he'd like to do is uh purchase the two lots. Um he maybe even just purchase the the bigger lot. And then uh at least build one house, but he'd like to build two uh seven hundred fifty square foot houses. The problem is the shit septic and probably the lot size. Um and I don't know if we can build them in their own footprint. Because it looks like.
I'll be real honest with you there, James. Without something in front of us, without without really an application in front of us, uh it's uh really moot, to be honest with you, uh. I don't know what to I have no idea what the circumstances are. I have no idea, you know, have you done the research? They've owned separately, were they combined? See, there's.
Right, I mean, they could easily purchase them separately. It's just that they're both for sale, right? They're both the um they're both an eyesore at the moment, right? So it would be a major improvement if we did something. I guess the the septic needs to be replaced, too. It's a it's one septic on two houses, you know? Uh, both houses are tear downs. You know, so um I just kind of need an opinion if you think that if you think that um it's worth moving forward on, you know?
James, I don't I don't know what. And then some of the other board members would like to offer an opinion. I I have no idea. You know, there's an awful lot of you're in the real estate business, you know, you'd have to do an awful lot of research with with the two homes. There's so many questions, James, that really it's hard to even help you out here. You know, with the two homes. Were they was the land each on its own lot?
I mean, it looks like.
But the combined. But they're combined and then was it separated again? Uh, now, I know they have a shared septic system that, we've had that in the past also, but
Right.
Just so many variables. It's without an application in front of us. I don't know, unless some of the other board members would like to give them a little guidance and direction. I, I really don't know what else to tell you there, James.
I know, I know, it's kind of, it's, it's not a, it's not your regular, uh-
It really is. I mean, you, you heard in the last one, we, seriously, we can only vote on and, and, and process what's in front of us, you know?
Right, right.
Hard to do just, uh-
I mean, honestly, honestly, uh, I mean, I, I would tell them probably not to spend the money and engineering and stuff because it's not likely that it's gonna be, you know, that the original septic, um, the septic that's there right now is, is shared and it's no good. So that needs to be replaced.
Right.
And then-
So I'll be honest with you, James, you'd probably, you know, being in the real estate business, you'd probably have a better handle on it or cost effective and whether or not, and I understand you don't want to, or your client doesn't want to spend the money where, unless you can actually do it, but, uh, you know, uh, you have a better grip on, on, on costs, what it would cost, what's involved. You know, the, the research, whether, uh, the size of the lot, whether it conforms or not, forms, you can, you know, pick up a copy of the zoning bylaws and, 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 uh, you know, wage your way through it. Find out, uh, maybe Conservation or the Board of Health can help you out with something like that, but I don't know, unless somebody else has anything they'd like to contribute to it, I, I don't really know.
I think, uh, he's been listening to the soul discussion that we've had tonight. So if you don't get an idea of the complexity of what we're looking at.
Right, right, right. Honestly, uh, so, yeah, I mean, I don't think, uh, I don't think you could, I, I don't think it's financially feasible, you know?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, well, sorry I couldn't help you any out mo- more than that.
Yeah, no worries, no worries. I appreciate that.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
Well, uh, gentlemen, I think, uh, we've gone through, uh, our agenda. We did the bills. We even had a fifteen minute recess, so, uh, life is good. Uh, how about a, uh, unless somebody has some new business, uh, I'll accept a motion to adjourn.
Let's make a motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to adjourn the meeting. Well, I'll ask for a voice vote, uh, Casia?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
Uh, Pete?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Another fun night on the Zoning Board of Appeals, gentlemen.